For your viewing pleasure, this broadcast of the Municipal Council Meeting of Alpena is made possible by the funding provided by the City of Alpena. Thank you for your generosity.
All right, good evening. Welcome to the Alpena City Council Meeting, January 15th, 2018.
Hess, Johnson, Nielsen, Noack, and Walagora.
Here.
Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any modifications to the agenda this evening? I look out there. Approval of the minutes, regular session of January 2nd, 2018, and closed session of January 2nd, 2018. Any issues or changes? Citizens appearing before council on agenda, non-agenda items are allowed five minutes each to address your concerns. If you'd like to do so, please come to the podium and state your name and address for our records. This is the only time during tonight's meeting that you'll be allowed to address council. Amber, I will give the floor to you for a moment, please.
Hi, I want to speak for a moment. Today is Martin Luther King Junior Day, the federal holiday for fall from the third Monday of January each year, Martin Luther's birthday. Dr. King was the chief spokesperson for violent, nonviolent activism in the civil rights movement, which successfully protested racial discrimination in federal and state law. This year, the holiday falls today, January 15th, his actual birthday. Dr. King will be celebrating his 89th birthday today if he were still with us. Fifty years ago this August, an act of violence ended Dr. King's life. However, his message of nonviolence and his passion for civil rights lives on through his words, words that still resonate and inspire us today. Just to share a couple of his quotations. "Our lives begin to end the day we become silent about things that matter. Life's most persistent urgent question is, what are you doing for others? An injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. Today I ask that we remember, honor, and stand with Dr. King against hatred, violence, and injustice in all forms, and when we encounter them, may we use our voices to speak up and our actions to stand up against them. Thank you."
Camera. Okay, the consent agenda this evening. A is bills to be allowed in the amount of $350,261.24. B is two mayoral reappointments to the authority for brownfield redevelopment for a three-year term expiring on January 1st, 2021, which is Michael Glowinski and Joseph Garber. One city council appointment to the harbor advisory committee for a three-year term expiring on January 1st, 2021, is Aldine Mo. And C is the appointment of council member Cindy Johnson as a member of the Sculpture Committee for Public Art Along the By Path.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Hess?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noack?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Okay, next up is an announcement. The only announcement this evening is there will be an intergovernmental meeting at Maple Ridge Township Hall on Thursday, February 1st, 2018, at 7:00 PM. For those that are new to the intergovernmental, that's the city council, the county commissioners, and the eight townships all meet, get a presentation, and then have some discussion. Anyone else have anything else on that? Okay, I have a proclamation this evening. It's Thunder Bay International Film Festival Week, well, not this week, January 21st through 28th. Whereas the Friends of the Thunder Bay National Marine Sanctuary was established in October 2010 to support the mission of the Thunder Bay Marine Sanctuary to identify, protect, conserve, and enhance the natural and maritime heritage resources, values, and qualities of the National Marine Sanctuary system for this and future generations throughout the nation. And whereas the Thunder Bay International Film Festival brought to the residents of Alpena through a joint effort of the San Francisco International Ocean Film Festival and the Thunder Bay National Marine Sanctuary hopes to bring a larger ocean awareness and environment for interactive learning and inspiration for local filmmakers to the community. And whereas the Thunder Bay International Film Festival will utilize the powerful form of visual communication film festivals offer as a means to communicate ocean and Great Lakes issues and bring cultural events to Alpena and surrounding communities in the hopes that these films inspire a shared vision of conservation of all marine environments through its stunning, sometimes controversial, and always conversation-starting films. And whereas the Great Lakes region, often considered the third coast, is a vital part of the global waterways, thus making global waterways issues our issues too. And whereas the Thunder Bay International Film Festival explores waterway issues through some of the most impressive ocean and Great Lakes-inspired films from around the world, complemented by social events, educational opportunities, and discussions with award-winning, nationally-recognized filmmakers. Now therefore, I, Matthew J. Walagora, by the virtue of authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Alpena, do hereby proclaim the week of January 21st through the 28th of 2018 as Thunder Bay International Film Festival Week in the City of Alpena. And tonight, we have Stephanie Gendula here from the Marine Sanctuary. I don't know if they have anything else to read than I did. You can rub them.
Thank you.
We have, first up is Comprehensive Annual Financial Reporter, Caffer, fiscal year ended June 30th, 2017, presentation by Straley Lamp, Print Line PC.
Mr. and Mrs. Mayor, welcome in, welcome in. My name's Phil Straley, and with me is Mark Sandula from Straley Lamp and Print Line. And we're going to talk about the financial statements for your year ended June 30th. It's a prone to become a 206-page document. We found a way to really zip through it and just focus on what we think are the key issues. I think there's three documents you should have. One is just the little blue agenda sheet that we passed out to the C team, but you should also have a bound audit report or maybe electronic on your computer. But also with that, we have a letter of communication that goes in charge of governance, which is the, you know, the council. What we'd like to do is, first of all, before Mark gets into the big bound audit report, just go over some of the comments or the disclosures that we as auditors are required to make to you again as the council. On page one of that letter, the first page just simply identifies or delineates our responsibilities versus you, your responsibilities, and the main part belongs to you, through your financial statements. We as auditors simply offer an opinion. It's a dual duty between you and between us. On page two of that letter, up near the top, under significant audit findings, we just want to point out a few things that, one is, again, you as management are responsible for implementing the certain accounting policies. We obviously help in that regard, some of these are very technical policies, as we get into the pension footnotes and the OPEB or other post-employment benefit areas. This year, there were two New Gatsby statements that were implemented, and I'm going to get into those in just a minute or two. But also, we wanted to point out, in the audited financial statement, along with some very precise numbers, there are some estimates, things like depreciation. When you buy a large capital asset, a truck, a building, we don't write it off any year, it gets depreciated for over the life of that asset, or the estimated life of that asset. Also, there are other estimates embedded in the financial report. For instance, you have an allowance for doubtful accounts, some collections for your ambulance fund. And then probably the two in there that also embed or embody estimates, they have to do with actuarial reports that you receive from your actuaries. One is your pension, and when you talk about pension, the actuaries to come up with how much you need to fund it have to use a lot of estimates. They have to use, what is the projected rate of inflation? How much will wages increase in the future? What's the expected return on planned assets in your pension fund? You have millions of dollars that are invested. The actuaries have to try to estimate, what is the return on those, so they can come up with a potential liability and also tell you how much you need to put into the pension fund to fund those pensions. Along with that, there's kind of a new disclosure, and we call it OPEB, or Other Post-Employment Benefits. These would be what people might refer to as like fringe benefits, healthcare, life insurance. When you make a promise to employees that you will pay those, and those will continue after retirement, there's a liability out there, and that's now coming into focus. In fact, there's a new report that all governmental entities that have OPEB plans or pension plans are going to have to now submit a report to the State of Michigan. The State of Michigan is going to start to monitor this, and they're looking, or their concern is whether these plans are appropriately funded or whether they're unfunded, and they're going to put a little pressure on governmental entities that maybe are too far unfunded. At the bottom of that, difficulties? No, there were no difficulties we incurred in performing the audit. Up at the top, on page three, any disagreements with management? Again, we're pleased to report those disagreements with management, and just like to point out that the city has always strived to be very transparent and conscientious with their financial reporting, and that's, you can see that in this report, which is referred to as a comprehensive annual financial report. On page four, recently adopted governmental accounting standard statements. Government units follow certain national standards on reporting. That's, so, financial statements, whether you're in California, New York, Michigan, or Texas, are pretty comparative. Governments have a lot of different, unique qualities or aspects, and again, you can look at a report from Texas, and you'll find that it's somewhat similar, the report that you're looking at from Alpena. But up at the top, we have what we call Gatsby Statement 74. This deals with post-employment benefits, and again, this had to be adopted with this financial statement, so that's helped this financial report grow to 206 pages because it's a pretty extensive footnote disclosure that we have to disclose in the financial statements. Item B, there's another portion because you have your own post-employment benefit plan. Next year, there will be additional disclosures that we will have to put into the financial report about the OPEB or the fringe benefits that are offered to retirees and employees. This year, there was a footnote dealing with tax abatements. There's now a new disclosure that's in financial statements that lets the reader know about any potential tax abatements that a government unit offers, and you will find that in the footnotes of the financial report this year. There's a couple more, but at this point, they're not implemented. We don't know exactly how they will potentially impact the city, but we'll be looking at those as they develop. And right now, I'd like to turn it over to Mark and give you a review of that two bound audit report.
Okay, I gave Phil a chance to steal some of my thunder, but he neglected to mention item two. This is the Caffer, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the City of Alpena for June 30th, 17, and for 23 years prior to this, we submitted to the Government Finance Offices Association for this certificate of achievement, and we, the city has won this award for 23 years in a row, starting in 1994 through 2016, and we anticipate that 2017, the report's going to win the award also. It's good, there aren't many local governments that receive this award for financial reporting As advertised, this now has grown to 206-page report, and for Amber, that's the only rookie, and Hannah, that are on the council, and it's basically three sections that this Caffer has broken up to. There's the introductory section that has things like the transmittal from the city clerk treasurer, finance director, and some profile of the City of Alpena information. It's about a page and a half, and also economic condition, what's going on economically within the city. The staff of the city puts together as part of the introductory section of this Caffer. We also include the vision and goal statement from long ago that we continue to think it's a viable document, and the city wants it included in the gap. There's the guts in the glue of the, as the accountant, indeed, this is the Oriole fill-in between the two wafers, that the financial section, which is all your financial exhibits and your individual fund statements and your RSI, which stands for Required Supplemental Information. And then last but not least, the statistical section has anything you'd ever want to know number-wise about the City of Alpena in this specific paper. The average thing from 10 years of financial information to the property tax base, to how many fire runs and police runs that the city has in a year, so it's pretty informative. With that, our only pages on this whole 206-page report from Straley Lamp and Print Line are pages 31 and 32, which is the opinion letter that we have to give an opinion on the financial statements, and between page 31, this is our two pages. It's called the Independent Auditor's Report, and it's broken up into sections. What is this is the report on the financial statements of the City of Alpena for June 30th, 2017. Management of the city is responsible for putting this report together, and I'm kind of like the editor, that I put all the information that they give me and I put it together, but they accept the responsibility for all the information that's in this report. And then my responsibility as an auditor is to make sure that it's accurate and that I mean expressive an opinion. So the last sentence on the auditor's responsibility, "We believe that the audit evidence we have obtained is sufficient and appropriate to provide a basis for our audit opinion." And then the last paragraph, "Opinions in our opinion, the City of Alpena report is materially accurate and in accordance with the county principles of general acceptance in the United States of America." So this is the standard, unmodified, clean opinion that, as high as you can get. We have no exceptions to the report in any way that we think that the average reader can look at this, and it's materially accurate and has a pretty good indication of how the City of Alpena is doing financially. The statement of position is a Gatsby 34, about 10 years ago or whatever, that the Gatsby decided that, "Boy, we have all these individual fund statements, but we'd love to see what the local units are as a whole." So this is your City of Alpena, the whole nine yards, as they would say, statement of net position, which is the balance sheet at June 30th. It's a snapshot of the financial position of the city at June 30th, 17. So on the left side is the governmental activities, which is the general fund and the two street funds and the debt funds, and then the business-type activities are the water and sewer operations and the component units of the DDA 205 and the economic development corporation. So those three columns translate into the activity of the city that, at June 30th, the city had $35,929,000 in total assets on the governmental side, and they had prepaid deferred pension plan asset of $2.5 million and $13 million with the liabilities. Now, included in that is some of the legacy costs that Phil talked about with the, the city has a pension plan, you have other benefits other than pension, and so that amounts to about $9.2 million of legacy costs that the city's going to have to bear. And that's the bad news. The good news is, is they've got 24 years to pay for them, so that's the liability as of that exact date of June 30th, but as the pay-as-you-go plan goes, you're going to have 24 to 26 years, depending on the contracts of who's in the retirement plan to pay for those, so you're not going to get that whole shot right, right now. So fortunately, or unfortunately, the city has that obligation to pay, and it has to be included in this statement of net position. So overall, the city ended the year with $53 million in net position after all the assets are accounted for and the bills are accounted for, and that's what's left over, traditional assets minus liabilities, that's what you'd be left with if you took all your cash and paid all your bills, and that's what would be left in your piggy bank at the end. So, page 146 and 152, to get away from talking about the Gatsby 34 that, and to talk about something this council is probably more familiar with, the local government stuff. General fund is the operating fund of the unit, so that's the most important fund at the City of Alpena. So on page 146, this is just the general fund information, so you have $3.7 million of total assets, $98,000 with the deferred inflows, $854,000 with the liabilities, which ended the year with a fund equity of $2,762,550. And this is down a little bit from the June 30th of 16, but the city had a lot of capital outlay expenditures that they expended in 2017 versus 2016, about $550,000 with extra capital outlay expenses this year than in the year before. And I don't know, that depends on the weather and what Mr. Solinger decides to do against his construction projects, and that's why the difference between 16 and 17, because the fund balance took a little hit of $453,000, which is not materially significant, but it did drop your fund equity down to $453,000. So basically, the city had to overcome the current property taxes, and Jeff, probably Mr. Shea would be able to explain what happened with the property tax laws, is essentially they rearranged the personal property taxes so that the city gets about $226,000 less in property taxes last year to work with because of the way they changed the personal property tax laws around that the tax base for personal property taxes was significantly less in 17 than it was in 16. The city also had an issue of revenue of $172,000 in state grants to make up for that loss of property taxes, and then $312,000 was additional projects that you did under a community development block grant in 17. In 16, you did the first part of the Owl project, and in 17, you did the Alpena Furniture Project, and the two of them together were $753,000, but it was $500,000 last year and $250 in 16. So that's why the revenue was different. Other than that, the revenue was only $100,000 more in 17 than it was in 16. And then, as mentioned, all the departments, pretty much their only increase in expenditures were for capital outlay items, that everything else was pretty inflation-friendly, that there wasn't any additional expenditures in the apartments that we did have in 16. On the bottom of my blue sheet is the general fund recap. The general fund had total revenues of $10,214,060, spent $10,171,470, and you had other transfers to other funds, like the local street fund got $300,000, and the major street fund got $50,000, and the Marina and the stores got $80,000 and $70,000 respectively. The city transferred $495,000 from the general fund to those five auxiliary funds, so that's why it added to the decrease in the fund equity also. The council has a policy number 55 that you want to keep that fund equity at over 10%, but less than 20%, but you did a waiver, because the fund balance currently is at 25.9 and not the 20%, but I guess that between the volatility of the property taxes, when that straightens around and when you decide to do some of these capital projects that are put on the shelf for a couple of years, that you decided to put a waiver on that and leave the fund equity at 25.9. So this, like I said, was down a little bit, but you're still in excess of your original plan of keeping it less than 20. With that, are there any questions? I know I talk fast and furious here.
I don't have any. I always appreciate your, hearing your perspective, as long as it's as fantastic as it has been.
That'll be fine, and I'll miss the two ladies that just retired last year.
Yeah.
They were, I'll miss Karen's, she was cheaper than I am, that when it came to the budget, she was pretty conservative, that she didn't spend any nickel, so she didn't have to. And then I knew the writing was on the wall with Julie Korniak when my staff started calling her Mrs. Korniak, because they went to school with her sons. But with that, you know, I guess we all have to carry on, and I wish you all the best.
Yeah, it's great staff, and we always certainly appreciate them.
And I just want to congratulate Mr. Sundon, and yeah, I can start calling him Mr. Sundon.
Yeah, I know.
The city did a marvelous thing when they appointed Hannah as treasurer and let Karen stick around to train her for a couple of months, that you don't get that opportunity very often, so that was exceptional, that the city was able to do that for Hannah, that usually in But usually, in our business, somebody retires on Friday and they have somebody new on Monday, you know, we'll get that kind of a training, so the transition was wonderful between the two ladies.
I'm very grateful.
Well, unless anybody has any other questions, I appreciate it. See you in a year.
Thank you.
Yeah, once again, you know, the city is just absolutely well-run, and you're tremendous financial position. As long as the snowfalling bill doesn't go up too high.
We'll talk. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
That receipt file?
Yeah. So move.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
And Haas?
Yes.
Next up is the Point and Time Survey for Homelessness in Northeast Michigan. Presentation tonight is by James Ucardt, Housing Program Supervisor for Northeast Michigan Community Services Agency, NMSCA.
Good evening, thank you for having me here. I don't think, I don't, I don't think I can top that presentation, but all I have is just a one-page survey. So, just to take a few minutes of your time, again, my name is James Ucardt, so I am the Housing Program Supervisor with NMSCA. We provide assistance for those that are experiencing homelessness or at risk of being homeless, or homeless. Each year, we have to do a federally mandated survey of those individuals that are literally homeless in our communities. I cover eleven counties and the City of Alpena is one of them. And so with this point, and it's called a point in time count, and what happens on January thirty-first for this year is we have teams going out literally into the communities, to parks, into parks, trailer parks, anywhere that individuals are staying, and they, the places are not meant for human habitation. And we're actually counting these individuals and asking some, some basic questions. And this information is then transferred back to the federal government, which helps us obtain more resources and more funding ultimately. Last year, within the five counties, because how it's demographically made up, each part of the region within the eleven counties is lumped into what's called a local planning body, so Alpena falls in with Alcona, Presqueo, Iosco, Mount Lorenzi. And for this area last year, along with Emmanuel Mission, which is a homeless shelter in Iosco, and also the mission here in Alpena, with our agency, we assisted approximately seven hundred and fifty individuals that were either experiencing homelessness or they were literally homeless. That's a big number, but we suspect that number is double that at this point. So this year, I started my position in May of twenty-seventeen. This year, within the eleven counties, we have undertaken this point in time count very seriously, and so we have developed committees throughout the eleven counties, we have enlisted volunteers to be able to go out into the community and identify where these homeless individuals are. And so I'm just asking for support from the council to convey this information to your departments. It could be anybody from the law enforcement, it could be the fire department, housing departments. I'm going to be knocking on doors, I have been, so if you can just convey that, somebody's going to come around, a bald guy, he's going to be passing out flyers, so it's just informational, but it's so important to our community. If we can have, if we can identify these individuals even more so, that means we can get more funding. Our funding is not a whole lot, and it goes pretty rapidly, and so when we get into times like February or March, typically we can be out of funding and we have no resources to really assist the literally homeless individuals, and that's a big problem for our area. So I provided you a flyer, each of you, and I have a stack here, and I'm more than happy to print off thousands more to hand out to you if you'd like, but all we're asking is just to be aware, if anybody identifies a literally homeless person in the community, to contact our agency on January thirty-first. The number to call is nine eight nine, three five eight, four seven oh seven, that's at the bottom of the flyer, and the individual, our assistant administrator will contact the outreach team, and we'll be going out and talking to these folks and hopefully getting them housed. So, any questions?
I don't have any. I guess, lucky for you, it was a one-stop shop, because all of our department heads are right here.
Well, that's perfect, so I have a stack of flyers here, if we can just get them.
Yeah, if you want to leave them. If you want to just give them to Greg here, he'll take care of that.
Absolutely. Yeah, any, any support verbally, it's free, it's the gift of gab, and it's just talking to people out in the community, to your constituents and so forth like that, so thank you so much for your time.
Okay. Thank you, James.
All right, next is Target Alpena Development Corporation's Annual Report, presentation by Jim Clark, Executive Development Director.
Good evening, thanks for having me. I'd like to, for sake, thank you again for your support for this past year, and I'd like to give you just a few-minute update on our activities over the past six months in the area. I'll jump right into, into a piece of property, the former Alpena Power Company site downtown. We've had over the last year or more numerous conversations with developers for mixed views, whether those be the possibility of developing condos, market-rate apartments, and so on. And those, that dialogue continues, so there's still talks going on with them, as well as as market data studies and that kind of thing. But one of the things I put in the report was, and I probably could have phrased it a little bit differently, the, one of the things that we run into that's, let's say, is to a certain degree that's raised some eyebrows from a developer's standpoint, is their current construction costs at two hundred to two hundred and fifty dollars a square foot, not aligning exactly where our current farm property values lie. So it obviously extends their risk, at least in their mind, you think that there's a accommodated market for apartments at market rate and/or, and/or market-rate condominiums in the area. And, long story short, we're working through that process with them, but that's, that's probably a better way to rephrase it. This past May, obviously, the holiday in Express opened, it's been doing quite well, and along with that, we really started looking at Alpena, you know, at the riverfront, saying, hey, where's the future development lie, where those opportunities are, et cetera, and how do, how might we accommodate them with similar-sized developments? And so what that's led us down the path is really looking at it and saying, hey, how does, how will those, a development of that size affect our street, how might it affect our parking? You know, are parking lots where they are currently, are they appropriately placed, et cetera? All of those type of things we're taking a look at right now, but we really think that the riverfront is our future. It has an opportunity to build out, not just on, on the south side, but it has an opportunity someday to build out on the north side, too, and that's something that we're looking at very hard, is how would we accommodate them. I think we would, we could get enough interest in it, it's just how would we appropriately manage it? And that's our conversations, obviously, that Greg will be involved in, as well as your offices and, and Adams. So in addition to that, we've been exploring several development options for OXPO. Unfortunately, those have been placed on indefinite hold just before the holidays. Hopefully, that will, will fire back up, but at the, at the current time, it's placed on hold. We sold two lots for development this past six months in Commerce, in Commerce Park. I think we have six lots, maybe seven, remaining, so I think we're over the halfway point in Commerce Drive. We've also looked at some other development options, for instance, in the area as it relates to housing, additional housing starts and that kind of thing. And we've assisted numerous local businesses in a variety of ways, mostly under long-term strategy, and most of that long-term strategy is expansion plans and/or looking at, at new buildings, at larger buildings and larger footprints, so it's promising. Again, going throughout the area, contrary to rampant rumors, Kmart building remains available. We have continued to work with the, with the real estate folks that are responsible for that, and we have shown the property to, to interested parties, most recently about week ago Friday. We continue to work hard to find a solution to the bus garage out on thirty-two, its relocation and potential concepts are still being explored with the developer on that front. We just got done assisting, pretty much assisting the, the owners of the MC building located, or former MC building located there on thirty-two, through the process of getting, getting that building turned back on and ready for, ready for new tenants. So I don't have a date on any when other freight will be moving in, but I'm sure that they'll make a corporate announcement in the near future. From a county perspective, one of the things that we really looked at, too, have been looking at and are moving towards is taking a look at the property that's available for development on the airport complex itself. And it's obviously a prime location, military presence, a huge asset to the community. The, the property located on the west side of Airport Road when you drive in, that property is, has wetlands delineation and all of that, all of that has been mapped out. We're currently looking, saying, how big of a footprint could we put on that piece of property, knowing where the wetlands are, et cetera? And we are in the process of building out a complete site selection package profile for that facility, that includes all the infrastructure, what could be placed where, et cetera, pertaining to the west side of, of Airport Road. So that will be done in the near future. We're also participating on the Joint Land Use Study Committee for the CRTC and surrounding area, which will also help guide future development from that complex's position. I took a look at, in your packages, SBDC, our SBDC activities from January first for the first, for these past six months. I noted no new business starts in the city, and then a job creation number, basically a twenty with a capital formation of eight hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred. Basically, what that was, we provided small business counseling and backed it up with loan programs for business expansions in the city, although, you know, you might, people look at it and say, oh, I might be disappointed that there aren't any business starts, starts. This is pretty exceptional stuff when you look at it, that the businesses are expanding to the point they are. Throughout the county, we had five business starts, jobs created, forty-two, and capital formation of just under one point five million. One of the other things I really wanted to mention in the report was, you know, beyond all that sexy stuff, a site selection and all of that kind of, you know, those kind of activities, some, there's very, some very important things going on, too, with our relationship with the chamber as it pertains to educational attainment and workforce development strategic goals. And if you take a look at what I, what we outlined in that package, the chamber really took it upon themselves to work with the school systems to provide hundreds of job shadow opportunities for students at the high school and college students. They also successfully hosted a three-day career exploration event for all the high school students. They also met with all high school seniors to train them on resumes, hiring process, interviews, job search strategies, soft skills, and more. It was so successful in twenty-seventeen that it's been expanded into a seventeen-week program for twenty-eighteen. It includes juniors and seniors, and that there's also a, Roger City Schools also have an, an interest in, in that, and Jackie is working with them on that. They've also obviously remained involved in the Career and College Access Network, and in addition to Chamber is focused on offering educational opportunities to businesses on the topics of leadership, human resources, issues of war. That kind of summarizes the highlights to a certain degree, and if you have any questions, I'll be willing to help you.
First thing, you know, just acknowledging that the current environment of Britain-Wars Stores currently is not the best it's been over the last, let's say, twenty years. Is there any specific objections that you're seeing for this area, or is it in general just the environment that they're, they're in?
There, I think there's a balancing act between the, let's say, their, their environment, okay, with, you know, combating online sales and that kind of thing, so they're, I think, to a certain degree, the retail segment is struggling with that. And at the same time, we're, we're moving from a greenfield development opportunities in, in most cases to brownfield development, redevelopment opportunities, and the county doesn't have, let's say, for instance, if they're looking at thirty-two, doesn't have that, the city does. So they're, they have to balance the owner's expectations of a return, the amount of money it would cost them to tear down, you know, if they wanted to be located in a particular area, and then balance the idea of what they need to attain, new construction and then rents, because most of them, most retailers don't own, they lease. So you'll, there's, 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 it, it becomes just a little bit more difficult, but there is still, I can tell you this, there is still a high interest in the area.
And with the downtown area being what it is, and being smaller, could you touch just a little bit on the intra, the entrepreneurship, the stuff that Target does for the area as well?
Yeah, sure, the small business development programs that we have, if you look at, and I think I reported this on the past, most of them, any of the metrics really that are measured across the upper peninsula and, let's say, northern Michigan as a whole, say, I think it encompasses about twenty-seven counties, we usually finish in the top three in most metrics that are measured, so that would be number of business starts, capital formation, and jobs created. So we, we're, we're pretty well-recognized and in some cases used as a model, as a model for those and, and for other people looking at that, and we also back it up with two small business loan programs, and we've helped other communities, I think it was a couple of years ago, we helped Mackinac County Economic Alliance up in the UP start a loan portfolio and small business consulting efforts there. So we do a good job at it. I would, I would say, at some point in their life, the majority of businesses in town have utilized our services.
And then finally, manufacturing, you know, obviously is a white blood of the community serving somewhat.
Right.
I'm just wondering, you know, what are the biggest objections that you're seeing manufacturing and/or businesses in airport expansion? What are, what are they running into?
I think the sky, I mean, for us, I think really, I don't say the sky's the limit, but for, for existing companies, right now, obviously, it's talent and, and, let's say, attraction. If you look at it today, I, I know that there's manufacturing companies in, in town that right now they've got employees that are driving sixty miles one way here. If you look at it as a whole, and I was going to save some of this to talk about at the Chamber's annual dinner, but I'll, I'll do it down real quick, if you look at the amount of people that are moving around our community every day, it's staggering. Now, I mean, if you look at Diamond Point, for instance, at that intersection, I think the, the average daily traffic counts are someplace around eighteen or nineteen thousand vehicles a day. I know that we're, I'm pretty certain we're over twenty thousand at Bagley and thirty-two, and, and up just north of town, led by the City Home Property, I think that number's someplace just under sixteen thousand. That's every day. So, I mean, when you drive, if you're out and about early in the morning, you see the people commuting, it's a steady stream of headlights in the morning coming at, coming in here from every direction, and it's taillights going home. I mean, we're employing a lot of people, they're coming here for a lot of reasons, they're coming here for employment, healthcare, shopping, dining, they're coming here for a lot of reasons, and, and that's, that's, that's really, you know, the backbone of what we do, we, we want more of that, right? I mean, that, we want to be that center, and we're becoming that center.
And then the last question I got is just on the tourism industry, you know, obviously has a huge impact in, in this area.
Does.
And just one of the things here, I guess we touched on it a little bit earlier, but, you know, how much impact does that have on a business-making decision to move into this area?
Well, they'll look at the... people commuting, it's a steady stream of headlights in the morning coming in here from every direction, and it's taillights going home. I mean, we're employing a lot of people, they're coming here for a lot of reasons, they're coming here for employment, healthcare, shopping, dining, they're coming here for a lot of reasons, and that's really, you know, the backbone of what we do. We want more of that, right? I mean, that, we want to be that center, and we're becoming that center.
The last question I got is just on the tourism industry, you know, obviously has a huge impact in this area.
Does.
And just one of the things here, I guess we touched on it a little bit earlier, but, you know, how much impact does that have on a business-making decision to move into the center?
Well, they'll look at, they will look at that seasonality, there's no question about it. I mean, we're, the tourism component and secondary residents and that kind of thing obviously is a bonus. They're also, they're looking at, like I said, full-service communities, like us, we have a year-round economy, we don't, we don't close down streets. You know, we're a lot different than some other northern Michigan, Michigan communities, so it is important in that light, but our continued growth, and our continued, I guess, sphere of, growing our sphere of influence is really important.
I'm done. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Pretty good. Great job.
Thank you.
Just a quick comment, that's something for you to prepare for.
Yes, sir.
Especially as we do the annual agreement, is since this spring, I assume, Rich, we're still scheduled to do the improvements across the wetlands on 23 North, that to begin to see a higher emphasis, then I'm looking at, again, the development of the 23 North property there, especially on the interior, as we'll have. Water, sewer, and road getting across what has been an ongoing obstacle for a long time will breach that this spring, so that will be one thing we'd like to see. And just as a note of economic development, which I think, I don't know how much involvement you had specifically with it, I know certainly Adam did, as I believe, again, this year, spring, early summer, is that Northland Credit Union will be beginning construction on Bagley, and that will be a major building, four-story structure there, so that will be something very positive for the city, as that will be within the city limits.
Significant, significant. You got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. That's also a file, a receiving file, someone.
I move the receiving file.
Second. Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Hoss?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
All right, next up is new business, a request by the Fire and EMS Department to hire an additional firefighter paramedic.
Good evening.
David Chee.
Honorable Mayor and Council, I come to you this evening looking for assistance in trying to control some of our overtime needs. There are a number of different issues to be concerned with, obviously, the financial impact of overtime, it's more expensive to have someone do a job on overtime than to have the right number of full-time people in the first place. However, there's also a tremendous stress on the firefighters' families and a lot of time if they're always working, and that's kind of the situation that we're in. Operationally, it's very difficult to staff if people have a choice, you know, can we get people to come, or can we not? If we can't get them to come, then can we provide the same level of service that needs to be done? But we've been plagued this year with a number of injuries. We have two off currently, or three, one's coming back tomorrow, one's still going to be off for an extended period, we don't know exactly how long, and one until summertime. And so, there's at least one hole on all three shifts that is requiring daily overtime to fill to maintain minimum staffing. Our minimum staffing level is based on two different levels, there's a contractual level of four on the floor, or four people in the station at all times to respond to a fire. In our county contract, it requires that we be able to field three ALS ambulances with two paramedics each at any given time, so that's six. To maintain six or seven people is hard to do if you're short folks. Ideally, we really need to add one per shift, we can't really afford that at this point, but we can afford one to fill some of those holes. And so, Greg actually suggested the idea, looking at the overtime costs, we took it to Karen and Anna and did an analysis. We determined the total cost of a new employee is about $74,000. We expect to save almost $67,000 on overtime costs, and the resultant changes or improvements in operational efficiency and the downsides to people working overtime all the time, I think are well worth, well worth the difference. So, our request tonight, very respectfully, is that you consider the possibility of increasing department size from 27 firefighters to two chiefs, to 28 firefighters and two chiefs?
My cost estimate could be lower. I base the cost on assuming that the new hire would be a two-person household. If he or she is single, then it would be a little bit less.
Family is a little more.
No, I think, isn't the insurance the same for a two-person family?
No. No, not health.
It takes about six months to onboard an employee. Once we have them selected and hired, then we start training. We hire people that are already certified as firefighter one and two, and licensed as a paramedic, but it still takes time to orient them to our department, our community, before they can operate independently. Additionally, it takes time to recruit people, particularly here in Alpine. You have to have people that want this career, and it's a great career, best job in the world, run around helping people all day, but they're also willing to relocate to Alpine because there are very few firefighter paramedics that already live here, and if they do, we've probably already hired them. So, we have to import them from somewhere else and convince them that at our pay level, with our benefit package, it's worthwhile to move two hours from civilization to beautiful Alpine. Once they get here, they'll love it, no question about it, but it's hard to attract them in the first place. So, that adds more time. We know we're going to have some retirements coming up, one probably this summer, another one probably in the fall, and with a six-month leave time, we really need to get started on that, that's why I'm timing now.
Chief, I didn't have any real issues with the report, and everything that you said made sense, I guess my only question was answered later in it, as to what we would do with that, with that employee once the other two that are off causing the overtime are back, but you answered that by saying that you've got a couple of retirements coming up, so I don't, unless I'm missing something...
Even besides that, you know, if we got back to totally full staffing, the extra, that additional 28th, what we've looked at, we've talked about during negotiations a couple of years ago, and since then, was with the Echo unit, especially on the day shift, that tends to, that takes away a person, correct me if anything I say is wrong, and so, there are always one less, which adds to overtime to backfill, or if there's a need for, because of volume. With that extra person, if we're back at full, we can begin to alleviate that somewhere where we're not always short on that day shift, and it wouldn't be that we're sticking somebody on that, the Echo unit permanently, it's a rotating thing, but it will always give us that extra person. So, even if we get back to full staff, it has a benefit in terms of reducing, controlling overtime and things of that, that one, that one extra person.
A, it assures that you have the employee, that you don't have to wonder, can you get somebody to come? But B, so often now, almost every day, well, really every day, there are callbacks, and if we could reduce the ones that are caused by the medic being on the Echo, and so we have to call somebody because we can't call them, that would eliminate that. Again, it's cheaper, it's straight time than overtime, so financially, it makes sense.
The more business transfers, is that affected on the daily shift?
Oh, absolutely.
Are they being pulled out of those shifts, and so when they go out and they're gone for several hours, you're...
Yeah, our shortest one is five hours, and we do about one a day, but that isn't the way it works. We go two days without one, and then we do three all at the same time.
And are those, those numbers better than they were last year?
Longest transfers are up slightly, local transfers are significantly down, and emergencies are down a little bit this year.
It all seems to add up for me.
Written for a motion?
A motion will be fine if you're ready.
I move we authorize Bill to hire an additional firefighter paramedic and to begin immediately the hiring process. Okay. Noah?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Hoss?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
And Nielsen?
Yes.
Thank you all for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
I move we adjourn to closed session, discuss water and sewer litigation. Second. Walagora?
Hi.
Hoss?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
And Noah?
Yes.